Hello and bonjour, I'm Sarah Bukhari and you're watching Power Dilemma here at TAC TV. An evening out at a restaurant on the Danforth should have been a relaxing night, but gunman Faisal Hussein did not care and opened fire on the family-friendly street, killing 10-year-old Juliana Kozis and 18-year-old Reece Fallon and injuring 13 others. In the immediate aftermath of the shooting, police did not identify a motive, saying that they were investigating every possible motive, including terrorism. On July 23rd, police executed a search warrant at Hussein's residence in the Thorne Cliff Park neighborhood of the city. A day later, CBS News published that according to a law enforcement source, Hussein visited ISIL websites, may have expressed support for the terrorist group and could have lived in Afghanistan and Pakistan, but was not apparently directed by ISIL. On July 25th, AMAC News Agency citing a security source stated that he was "from the soldiers of Islamic State," yet Toronto Police said there was no evidence of an ISIL connection. Amarnath Amar Sangam of the Institute for Strategic Dialogue doubted AMAC's claim and said it may have been prompted by the CBS News article. Since Hussein was found dead after a shootout, the SIU looked into whether he was shot by police or shot himself. On July 23rd, it removed a police cruiser from the scene and said the two officers in it were being investigated for their roles in the shootout. Hussein's handgun was also seized. On July 25th, a police source told CBC that Hussein committed suicide. The same day, a police source told CB24 the gun was from the United States and obtained from a gang-related source. A police source later told CDV it had been stolen in 2015 during a Saskatoon burglary. It may have come to Hussein from his brother who lived at a house in Pickering where 33 guns were seized in 2017. Canadian Prime Minister Justin Trudeau and Minister of Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Ralph Goodell tweeted their condemnation of the shooting and praise for the police. Ontario Premier Doug Ford described the attack as "the most brazen shooting of a year full of gun violence." Toronto Mayor John Tory called the shooting "an unspeakable act" and "an act on a city with a gun problem." He said he planned to discuss public safety and the legality of guns with provincial and federal officials. Because the event took place in Toronto's Greek town, the Greek Ministry of Foreign Affairs expressed solidarity and condolence. Calvary Church, located near the site of the shooting, held a prayer vigil joined by a congregation from the nearby mosque. Toronto has had 228 shootings this year, 29 of them fatal. The number of deadly shootings in the city has already grown from 17 compared to this time last year. Before the Danforth attack, other high-profile shootings in Toronto public places, including the entertainment district, popular downtown destinations, and a playground where two young sisters were wounded, thrust gun violence into the spotlight, grabbing international attention. So, to further dig deep down into the Danforth shooting and various other shootings in Toronto, we have our very worthy guest, Mr. Benjamin Ditter, who is a political strategist and has recently been a part of Quiggin Report. Welcome to my show, Benjamin.
Thank you very much. How are you, Sarah?
I'm very well.
Good.
Benjamin, first of all, congratulations on creating the Quiggin Report. Please tell our viewers what is this report about?
Essentially, the Quiggin Report is highlighting much of the intelligence experience and knowledge possessed by Tom Quiggin, who is an ex-military, ex-intelligence analyst, who has decades of experience, practical in the field, dealing overseas in a variety of different theaters, all centered around intelligence and security threats. He also was a weapons inspector, he was involved in testimony for the Air India Inquiry, he was part of the team who wrote the recommendation to the United Nations warning of the genocide in Shrevenita. So, the man just has a highly, highly extensive resume and I thought it would be a good opportunity for some of us who were close with Tom to build this platform and this would be a good opportunity to combat some of the false narratives that we see coming out of the greater mainstream media. So, here we are.
So, how is the Quiggin Report connected to the Danforth shooting?
Well, I mean, we do cover security issues and security threats that occur both, not only in Canada, but in most Western or Westphalian countries. And this is part of, you know, one of the primary global security threats, which is the growth of Islamist extremist groups. It just so happens I also live in the Danforth and was the Conservative Member of Parliament candidate for Toronto Danforth as well. This just happened down the street from me.
Yes, you were a Conservative candidate in 2015 elections and that is actually your writing where this happened, which is very, very, very sad. So, Benjamin, I have a question for you. Why use the mental health argument? Don't you think that mental health argument is becoming a rhetoric now in shootings?
Well, it's a red herring. It's a tool used by the Islamists to defer everybody away from a problem so everyone can focus on something that has absolutely nothing to do with the current. To give a guy who's not mentally ill, there's no evidence of that.
Okay, now that you have mentioned Islamic or Islamist extremism, can you say for sure that Mr. Faisal Hussein was connected to ISIS or Islamist extremists?
Well, we can say, you know, there's a lot of tips and suggestions and ideas that have been coming across to us. I mean, there's a team of us that are working on this. Some of us former journalists, some of us techies, and, you know, a couple of people in intelligence. And there seems to be a lot of things coming in that have to be corroborated and certified. You know, one of Tom's big strengths is he is, I think, the only court-certified in both federal and criminal courts, recognized by the Crown as the authority on Islamist terrorist groups in Canada. He's the only one. So, you know, we've got to get it right and we've got to make sure everything is 100%. But there are a lot of things that, you know, takes time to confirm what people say and having going back to find out who the source was, who found out about this. And I'm sorry, you know, we live in the age of journalism where the journalists just want to throw out a story, have it be done by 5 o'clock in the afternoon. But as I'm learning, much like regular intelligence investigations, things take time. You know, you saw how long it took, it took them a couple of days just to collect all the bullets and figure out where all the fragments were. And this is an ongoing issue and it gets worse and worse the more we dig. As, you know, as we mentioned in the Quiggin Report, episode number 23, the Danforth shooting, that might not have been the big story. That might have just been one small part of a very large and big problem we have in Canada. And that is the motivation behind politicians and media sources trying to bury this story and get people to move on because it might bring the magnifying glass onto a much broader issue that's occurring right now.
So, let's allude on that. What is this big problem coming into Toronto and then Canada?
Well, one of the things that for some reason, you know, I looked at the CBC and I just laughed. It's at the point where it's worse than the onion. You know, they've decided they're going to start with this mental issue narrative, which was proposed by Mohammed Hashim, who works for NCCM. He's a propagandist for them and his job is to deflect any time there's any sort of incident within the greater Muslim community, he rebrands it. You know, he was the one who, and they're quite proud of it, he was the one who was responsible for getting the Toronto Star to no longer refer to ISIL or ISIS as an Islamic organization. So, that's who, the person who penned this well-crafted statement that went only to two news sources, the Toronto Star and the CBC. And Shanif Nassar grabbed the press release, regurgitated it under the CBC logo, sent it out, and the rest of the media picked up on it. But when you look at it on the deeper level, there are a few very disconcerting issues. One of them is, I'll give you an example. The surety of Mr. Hussein is one by the name of Mantum Ansari. And Mantum Ansari was arrested two years ago for the largest ever drug bust in Canadian history. The largest carfentanol bust in North American history. 42 or 43 kilos of carfentanol with a street value between $13 million and $20 million, in addition to 33 guns and weapons that were illegal in his possession. But this is something that the CBC will not report on because the danger that they have that this may prove the intersection between organized crime, the global opioid crisis, and terrorism. And if these things get put under the magnifying glass, then all of a sudden, there's a big problem that politicians need to address. They can't ignore this anymore. Right now, the current tactic is to virtue signal about the victims of opioid crisis. Now you have the terrorism element and how do they deal with it?
So, my question here is, after this discussion so far, is why the mental narrative is used to eclipse the, you know, deeper issue of maybe terrorism related to shootings, particularly in the Danforth case?
Well, because it's an easy red herring and, you know, that part of the political spectrum is all about, you know, victimization. And it's funny, it's really interesting how when they'll promulgate a narrative that mental illness is a problem for all of us, but as soon as there's the opportunity to use that as a weapon to distract against a real problem, then they'll jump on that, right? That's essentially what the tactic is. And you know what? People know it. People aren't stupid. I was just going through as we were doing some research back and forth. There's a CBC article or piece on YouTube that was uploaded by The National and this was further promulgation of the victim narrative. And, you know, you try to get some analytics and you can just see very clearly people's like upvotes versus downvotes. It's 37 upvotes versus 150 downvotes. People know they're being sold a complete lie, they understand that. The only people who don't are the ones who are the most loud and obnoxious and they're the ones who are, you know, they're the ones who are engaged in this. And that's a broader problem.
Okay, I'm going to ask you a very difficult question.
Sure.
Yeah, so if the investigators, police services, other agencies are able to define that the incident in Danforth was related to the big T, terrorism, do you think they're going to shy to bring it forth to the public and the media?
They're going to do everything they can to prevent that from happening. It's an election year in the city of Toronto, in municipalities across the province. This is very, very inconvenient and very, very difficult to deal with. And I, listen, I get that. I understand that this is a broad problem that, you know, when you're going through the process of having an election, how do you deal with it? You know, you actually have to stand, you can't be a fence sitter anymore. You actually have to address the issue in a very concrete way. And, you know, I sympathize with it. It's very difficult because it's such a complex and difficult problem.
So, you think because of the election year, because of maybe some interests, the reality will not be able to come to the fore and the people, the public and the voters will not be able to know the real truth?
I don't know if it's fair to say that would be the sole motivation. I mean, look, these are very, very complex problems related also to ongoing investigations. And, you know, when the police and the security services are engaged in ongoing investigations, sometimes it's, it can be a little bit obstructive if the public are aware of certain things and start to ask questions related to cases that are currently under investigation. So, I sympathize there as well. But, you know, there's a number of inconsistencies that have been laid out. The autopsy was done last Tuesday. Where's the autopsy report? But the autopsy, the response that we've been given so far is, well, the incident is still under investigation. But this is, as I've learned, highly unusual, given that the assailant is deceased. If the assailant was alive, that's a different story. But he's deceased. And there are a number of reasons, we think, amongst many of us who have lots of friends on Danforth and who were witnesses as to what went on, we have an idea of why that might be. And I'm not at liberty to say just yet because we haven't confirmed anything. But I'm hoping they'll do the right thing and they'll bring not only the autopsy report out, but they'll be a little bit more honest with the public, even though it's very difficult and it will force some difficult conversations. But we all talk about how our society has become hyperpolarized. Well, here's an opportunity to just bring forward the facts and bring people together from both sides to try to solve this problem. But we can't solve this problem if people are not being honest with the citizenry.
So, assuming Faisal Hussein was innocent or vulnerable and he had mental health issues, what services and supports are in place to prevent vulnerable people from picking up a firearm?
I think the question is a little bit loaded, if, if, if. I mean, at the end of the day, we, all evidence seems to be to the contrary. There has been no documentation, no paperwork, no certification of his mental illness that apparently went back from when he was a kid. Listen, if you're a kid and you're diagnosed with some sort of mental illness, you're sure that our healthcare system is monitoring, providing different services and there's records of everything. That's why when people go to a psychiatrist or psychologist, there's a record of every single visit that that person has, but there's been zero evidence of that whatsoever.
So, do you think that the Toronto mental health system has flaws?
Well, listen, every mental health system has flaws, but I don't think you can blame this shooting on the mental health system. I mean, how would you do that?
It's a puzzle.
You can't be anticipatory of anyone's individual actions. And that's also still under the premise that he had mental health issues. I'm more interested into why was the gentleman who was arrested in the largest possession of carfentanol in North American history, allowed out on bail on $10,000 and is roaming around Scarborough? Our intelligence services know where he is, he's just roaming around.
Yep.
Right? Why was this whole crew not evaluated under surveillance? Or, or was he?
Yeah.
Right?
So, and like you, Mr. Benjamin Ditter, you were a Conservative candidate in Danforth in 2015. You, of course, you put your name in the ring. If you become, if you plan to run in 2019 and put your name in the ring, what measures would you take to control gun violence in Toronto, in your area?
Well, I don't know. Well, thank you for the very subtle invitation. I don't know that I will be doing so. I have another podcast coming online in the fall, unrelated to this, or at least indirectly related to this. So, my schedule is quite busy, as it is. But in terms of what can we do to curb gun violence, listen, this is, for all, everything seems to be, and it's just a matter of combing through the evidence to confirm it because everyone seems to be 90% sure. All the evidence seems to point that this is at least indirectly related to terrorism in that these people were associated with terrorist elements. So, we all got to put on our big boy pants and stop worrying about who's getting offended and start addressing this issue of terrorism, of excessive migration, a lack of vetting of people. Listen, you and I are good friends. You're in the Muslim community as well. You know of nefarious people that are active in your community and everybody is afraid to talk about it. And they're afraid to talk about it because we have beta males as leaders who are too afraid to address the issue, for example, our Prime Minister and others. And this is not, this is not party, this is not related just to one specific party. But we all got to grow up and speak honestly about this issue. And if we do, then we'll be able to address it.
Okay, you've touched a very sensitive topic, excessive immigration. I'm going to have an entire show with you on excessive immigration in Canada and, you know, all the, all the, all the frills connected to it.
And listen, I am pro-immigration. I have lived in other parts of the world. I have almost married somebody who had gone through our immigration process and I know what a nightmare it was. But the problem is the fact that we bring people in, just open the doors, let anybody in. So, you know what the problem is? When you do that, when you don't, when you don't have the ability to at least assess who is coming into your country, then you open the door to the possibility of the criminal element. So, one of the countries I spent a lot of my time in is Colombia. And Colombia, although is much safer today, still has, they have paramilitaries, it's got narcotraffickers, it's got a variety of different nefarious groups. One has to be aware of that when we're bringing people to integrate into our society. You just, you know, put the wool over your eyes and pretend and hope for the best that everything's going to work out fine. That's not a policy.
Yeah, no, it's very interesting. We're just short of time. Benjamin Ditter, thank you so much for being here with us today at Power Dilemma, talking about gun violence. Thank you very much.
My pleasure, dear.
Okay, and it was Mr. Benjamin Ditter, who is a political strategist and he was, he's also a Conservative, a past Conservative candidate for 2015 elections and he is associated and created the Quiggin Report. We're going to take a short break and once we come back, we have other issues to tackle with here at Power Dilemma. Stay tuned. Welcome back to Power Dilemma here at TAC TV with Sarah Bukhari. Ontario is introducing legislation to cut Toronto City Council seats. More efficiency, $25 million saved and more getting done at Toronto City Hall. That's the pitch from Premier Doug Ford's government with the introduction of the Better Local Government Act. The bill, in addition to a number of other changes, moves to overhaul Toronto City Council, slashing the number of councillors from 44 to 25. The bill was brought to the floor of the legislature last week, where it received first reading, during which the purpose of the bill was explained. The premier claimed the proposed law will streamline City Hall. "There isn't too many people that I know that wouldn't want to trade in a bunch of politicians for $25 million," Ford said. First reading carried without a formal vote. Second reading could prove to be a lengthier process. During the stage, it is debated and amendments are put forward. The NDP tabled an amendment that could delay passage of the bill. The amendment read in part, "This bill be not now read a second time, but be referred back to the government with instructions to first provide a report to the House outlining the method and scope of public consultation measures that involve the drafting of the bill." When questioned by Global News on what else her party can do to stop the bill, NDP leader Andrea Horwath said, "We don't have very many arrows in our quiver, very many tools to use, but we will use every tool we have to try to push this back." So, to talk about the trimming of Toronto Council and, you know, the question and answers connected to it, we have our regular commentator with us, Jamie Lerton, who is with Conapthers. Welcome to my show, Jamie. It's always good to have you.
Thanks for having me back, Sarah.
Okay, so why is there a need to cut the city council, Jamie?
Well, I think the premier's intentions have been quite well documented. He is of the view that City Hall is inefficient and that council is too large and that he's reducing the size through legislation, which ultimately is the province's jurisdiction and ability to do so. There are 25 MPs in the city of Toronto, there are 25 MPPs in the city of Toronto. And if this bill indeed becomes law, as we expected to it, that means there'll be 25 city councillors running for council in this fall's municipal election.
Okay, so is the province going to save monies really by slashing the councillors?
So, there will no doubt be savings to be found once you get rid of a, almost of 22 councillors, not almost, once you get rid of 22 councillors and their staff, there will no doubt be some savings that are realized there. I would expect there'd be a slight increase in councillors' office budgets if they're going to be serving a lot more constituents now going forward. But in terms of kind of like the real government savings to be had, I think that is more than just at the political level. It needs to be built into how the bureaucracy and government services are delivered. And so, I think this symbolically sends the message that indeed reducing the size of government and savings are something that the Ford government is going to continue to pursue. But you need to see some major reductions in spending at the department and services level if you're actually going to see a real reduction in the size of government.
Okay, so our viewers would like to know that, as you said, that there are 25 MPs, 25 MPPs and the Premier Doug Ford wants the council to have 25 councillors. What are the levels of authority and jurisdiction of these levels of government in, around Toronto?
So, the municipal government deals with things like infrastructure, road repair, sewage, garbage and the like, like that. Provincial governments are responsible for a lot more regulatory affairs as well as healthcare and education, as well as like provincial infrastructure. So, things like provincial rail, like the GO network, things like the 400 series highways and the like. And then the federal government, on a day-to-day basis, is probably the level of government the Canadians interact with the least. There's what, you know, services in terms of employment insurance and other things like that, it's Services Canada or Administered by the Federal Government as well, are things like passports and immigration processing. But for the most part, you're probably dealing with the provincial or the municipal government on a day-to-day basis based on what, whatever the needs are of what you're servicing. And I think part of the argument here for reducing the size of council, if you've ever watched a council meeting, there's a lot of pontificating and showboating that goes on and it's a fairly inefficient way to run meetings. There's very rarely when you watch a council meeting in Toronto, do you ever feel like you're actually seeing real debate as well? So, I think part of the inspiration behind this to reduce the size of councillors is to make decision-making more efficient. And it's my hope, if you see there's going to be fewer councillors, it's that each of the councillors will end up having a higher profile in the city and by doing so, it will kind of create some more accountability so that people know who they need to turn to at City Hall and who ultimately is responsible for the decisions being made or the decisions not being made. I think it's one of the frustrations people have, especially here in Toronto, is it feels like nothing gets done and nothing changes in terms of some of the major infrastructure stuff and that you keep seeing votes over and over and over again. I remember when Prime Minister Harper and Premier McGinty with Mayor Ford announced the Scarborough subway and announced the funding for it and like, here we are, how many years later and the shovels still aren't in the ground.
Wow.
The Eglinton across town is slowly the sherry getting built, but everyone feels like it's taking forever. Bombardier and the new streetcars in Toronto continue to be delayed. So, again, this is kind of this feeling like nothing gets done. And I think having a smaller council will help make decisions made more efficiently and ultimately provide a more like firm grip on the hands of executive decisions that comes from Toronto City Council on the decisions that are made and they can ultimately help to account for those decisions.
So, smaller Toronto council, a smaller or lesser bureaucracy, lesser paperwork and efficiency in plans to be materialized, right?
I think part of that is true. It's not necessarily less bureaucracy. At the end of the day, all the departments and agencies that exist will continue to exist after the reduction in council goes through. But what it does is it takes some of the politics out of the situation when there's less politicians around the table, I think. I think you've heard Doug Ford say many times over now, over the past week, that no one's ever said we need more politicians. But I think having more focus from the political level, who ultimately represent us, residents of the city of Toronto at city council, and represent our interests as elected councillors, they will be the ones tasked with continuing to manage and provide that oversight of city operations and continue to look what that is. But I think one of the key things, again, that I kind of said earlier, symbolically, yes, this is reducing the size of government by reducing the number of elected officials. But if you're really going to reduce the size of government, that is, does come at the executive level when it comes to things of the number of departments and agencies, the number of people employed there, and all the procedures in place. And until we see a reduction there, I think this is more symbolic than substantive at this point.
Okay. So Andrea Horwath, the leader of the official opposition, has vowed to become a hurdle for Premier Doug Ford, this very sane step. So do you think that Doug Ford's plan to slash Toronto City Council actually will be stopped?
I don't think it'll be stopped, because the form you've seen from the PC COCs at this point is they support what the premier has said in the legislation as it exists before the legislature today. So there might be some minor tweaks at the amendment stage when the bill goes to committee for clause-by-clauseery, before it comes back for a final vote for third reading in the legislature. But I think that the spirit of the bill and the broad strokes of what has been announced will ultimately become the law. But at the same time, I think this is ultimately something that Andrea Horwath feels passionately about. The NDP stands for the New Democratic Party, and a lot of what they do is a result of the democratic portion of things. And there are those out there who think that we need more democracy and more votes and more representation at all levels of the system. I think there's obviously a balance to be had between having electoral oversight and having our elected representatives represent us in their various bodies, whether that's city council, the legislature, or the House of Commons. But the government, at the end of the day, also has to be the executive branch of government, has to get on with running the government. If you're constantly questioning every single decision from a process standpoint, you really do just get bogged down in the process. And I think part of making a smaller council is to have more empowered decision-makers who are still given an electoral mandate, but have a more of a swift, say, mandate to implement the changes in policies that they run on when they seek elected office and hopefully get more of a streamlined government through that. But the bureaucracy and kind of the permanent public service that exists at all three levels of government, be that City Hall, the Ontario government, or the federal government, those are still going to be there, and the electoral oversight that our elected officials provide over that, and in the federal and provincial case, the ministers who ultimately are the head of the executive branch, it is up to them on the decision-making process to really rein in government in that regard.
Okay, very good input from you, Mr. Jamie Lerton. Thank you for being with us today.
Thanks for having me back, Sarah.
Okay. So viewers, this was our show today. We talked about Danforth shooting, and we, our guest, Mr. Benjamin Ditter, who is a political strategist, talked in length, and we tried to dig out the reasons behind the Danforth shooting, and then we talked about Toronto City Council and its slashing down, and what are the questions related to it. And we had our guest, Mr. Jamie Lerton of Conaptus with us. Keep, stay with us, stay tuned, and next week, we're going to come with more issues. If you have any questions, you can always shoot me an email or send me a comment on our Facebook page, Power Dilemmas, like that. And stay tuned. Till next time, ciao.